Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Here.
Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Mr. Royce?
I'm here.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Gert?
Here.
Mr. Brayden?
Here.
We have all members present this evening. Before we move on to amendment of the agenda, I did want to welcome the Xavier University American Government and Politics class. They are scattered throughout in the audience, so welcome. You picked a fun meeting. We have three public hearings tonight. Moving on to amendment of the agenda, we do have several items. We are removing the minutes from the August 12th meeting. We are adding a finance committee report from their July 8th meeting. Under ordinances, we have the first three pertaining to PLK. And per the guidance of the law director, we are moving what is listed as ordinance number three to be the first ordinance to be considered this evening. That will be the only change, so.
M3 to M1?
It'll be, yep, so we're gonna go 312 will be the order for consideration. Mrs. Hoover?
I make a motion, we amend the.
Oh, I'm not done.
I'm.
You're jumping the gun. I got, I have more. The last item was just, oh, no, we do, I have another. We are adding M6, which is the appropriations ordinance. And communication, we will have one of those, and that is regarding mayor's court fines. And that is all. Mr. Brayden?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to amend the agenda as stated.
Motion by Mr. Brayden to amend the agenda as stated. Mrs. Bowlin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowlin. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Royce? All of the yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gert?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. So we do have three public hearings this evening. And we'll move on to the first. That is a notice of public hearing, Norwood City Council. Following item will appear on the agenda as a public hearing on August 26, 2025, at 7:30 PM. On June 19, 2025, the Norwood Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding item number five of the June 19, 2025 Norwood Planning Commission Agenda Five. Mick Oaks, Associate Developer with PLK Communities, is submitting a preliminary planned unit development, PUD plan, for the property South Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach Street, Norwood, Ohio 45212, 2.839 acreage, Hamilton County Auditor's Book 651, page 0030, parcel 0206, located within the NBD PUD Neighborhood Business District/Planned Unit Development Overlay, including the proposed PUD expansion 2741 Robertson Avenue, Norwood, Ohio 45212, Hamilton County Auditor Book 651, page 0300, parcel 0194-00. We'll go ahead and declare this public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor of the matter, please step forward. If you can, please state your name.
Mick Oaks with PLK Communities. Good evening. As I said, Mick Oaks with PLK Communities. I'm here to talk about what we are calling the Robertson South Development. It's been a little bit over a year since we first presented this PUD application to Planning Commission. Had lots of back and forth revisions with both the city, fire department, and the neighbors as well. Primarily, we started at 48 units, I believe, was the first round, maybe even a little higher. We've shrunk that down to 45. We've gone back and forth with the fire department, amended some of their street widths and road turn adjustments. We had a great meeting two weeks ago at the Housing Committee. Really talked in depth, I think, with a lot of the problems. There was quite a few of the city council members there. So I'd be happy to talk about more. I don't want to belabor something that's been out here for a year, but would be happy to answer any more questions that council has and really go from there, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone else to speak in favor of this matter? All right? Anyone to speak against this matter?
Hey, good evening. My name's Joe Kaufman. I live on Burwood Avenue. Just wanted to, I guess, discuss some of this maybe in some more detail and provide a little bit of like a residence perspective to what this looks like. So the South Robertson stuff, they pretty much acquired the multi. My understanding is that they acquired the multicolor site, and this was a parcel that was included with that sale. I believe in one of the previous meetings, PLK didn't necessarily seek out the property, but it happened to be tagged along with the rest of the development. So, hey, if you got land, you might as well do something with it. So that's, that's a fine cherry on top for the situation. And I think the city should expect a sweet deal to go with that acquisition. I don't think anybody's necessarily complaining about the current condition of what's there at South Robertson right now. It's a parking lot with some natural grown vegetation adjacent to the highway. But it does seem like there are some surrounding residents that have concerns with some of the, I guess, the site changing and the construction activity and things that are going to take place and be potentially disruptive. Just to give some perspective, I did a little bit of research on the, what it would look like to impact and build the, now we're up to, I think, 45 units is part of the development. And in a report that I presented previously, this would increase the population density of that block in the neighborhood up to 120%. So you've got about, I think, 35 residents living in that block. So we're talking about adding an additional 45 units. So I know that there were some residents coming up and saying, hey, I think this might be disruptive. And that is certainly an outcome that could be an impact for the increase in density. Norwood homeowners make up the minority in the residential living here in the city. Owner occupied is about 47% of all residential units, and rentals make up the remaining 53%. And that's with about 4,600 rentals in the city. So we're talking about adding an additional 45 rentals. That's going to increase that disparity even greater, bumping us from, I think that math works out, to about 46 to 54% in favor of rentals. And that might not include the current development numbers that are already happening. I think we have three rental developments happening currently with the Factory 52 at the Multicolor Corporation. We've got the stuff happening up by Xavier, and we have the stuff happening at the Fun Factory. So I don't know if those numbers that were researched are including those. So, and there's nothing wrong with the rental population here in Norwood, but it can impact how people engage in their community, myself included. I lived in Norwood for five years, rented for five years, and didn't really engage civically until becoming a homeowner. So there is that type of an impact that can come with allowing or building additional rental units as a type of community engagement you get from the residents living here. And then also the CRAs that are currently in place. I think this is something that we should be considering with property taxes and how that works right now. My understanding is that there are some pretty heavy agreements in place currently that were recently enacted for tax abatements on new developments. So if we're looking at a piece of land, one of the big, I guess, benefits to developing something is that you're increasing the property value of that land and building on it. A lot of time and effort goes into that, as well as additional city resources. Hence, something like this meeting, Public Works gets involved. So there's a lot of draw to creating something like this. And if we're, if we've already approved a law that doesn't necessarily generate any additional revenue, I mean, the land that's sitting there right now would generate pretty much the same amount of revenue that it would if we were to put on 46 rental units. Just with the understanding of how the CRAs work, I think it's for a 10 or 15-year tax abatement. So there's, it's not like, oh, we're gonna build something on this land, and all of this money is gonna come into the city. It's not gonna be for 10 or 15 years, at least my understanding as a resident, for how that would work. So I would strongly encourage city council or the planning commission that we rethink how we do tax abatements for these types of developments as they continue to pop up. Right now, we have three of them, taking advantage of a very generous tax abatement program that's not necessarily benefiting directly the city through rentals and the rental income and property taxes. As far as the planned unit development, the meeting two weeks ago, there was a presentation of the layout of the property with some additional details that were very helpful. And the developer's goal is to fit in with the neighborhood. So it sounds like there is some of that to be considered. One of the things that came up was green space requirements and matching those. Right now, we're, it's a natural green space, and they're gonna be developing that. So as a developer, they have to deal with the surface runoff water. And right now, their big way of doing that is using a detention-retention surface level detention pond, which still, I don't remember if it's detention or retention, one counts for green space, one doesn't count for green space. I shared a picture with some on city council for what one of those retention-detention ponds look like, especially when they're not maintained, and they just end up being a giant mess of usually wetland, tall grass, unusable space that residents end up just looking at from like an eyesore perspective. And so there's, the alternative is to bury underground storage tanks or, their contact is one of the very familiar products, that they're usually these orange shells that you put under the ground, and then you cover over them. In fact, Williams Elementary just put those underground for their parking lot. And what that allows is for them to meet the surface runoff requirements, but then that land above becomes a usable, I think it's a parking lot playground and that type of thing. And I think that question came up a few weeks ago with the planning commission as to why there isn't a look into doing that. And the number one feedback was that it is more expensive. So I don't know, if our schools are required or see the benefit in doing underground retention, I think it's not out of the question to request and the developers to follow suit. If it's good enough for the schools, it should be a good enough standard or high enough standard for our developers here, especially when green space is being choked off and hard to come by. And by burying those now, that detention pond space could be used for actual things like a trail or a dog park or usable resident amenities to benefit from. I just wanted to point out that the demolition of the house on Robertson can be avoided if there is a one-way-in, one-way-out access point, like a single access point. It's achievable. It just reduces the number of buildable units that can fit on the parcel. So if there was consideration to say, oh, we don't want to tear down any existing residences, that, that certainly is something that can be achieved. Also, that the way that things are being set up right now, there's discussion about the exit being onto Robertson being a right turn only. So if you're driving out of there and you make a right turn out of Robertson, where do you go? You go to Oakley. Not, you don't go to. So if I'm a resident and I'm doing shopping and I need to go engage with the city that I live in, I'm actually shooting out to a different city to go spend my money at Oakley Station, to go to places and spend my tax dollars and sales tax in other jurisdictions throughout the city. I understand that there's a safety concern there, but that is a real situation that just be aware of when we're doing that. Also, the trash and recycling dumpsters are, were shown in the plan. And I would, I don't know, I guess I would like to see those be closer to residents. I think I walk about 50 feet from my house to a garbage can to put my waste away, and then once a week, I take that can out. This living situation looks to be a little different, where there's gonna be a community dumpster in the development. And the average distance, I calculated about 400 feet from the front door of the residences to the dumpster. So that is about, I think, a football field, if you're at Shea Stadium, from end zone to end zone, and then keep walking. And that's just to go deliver your garbage to the dumpster. The longest distance I calculated was 750 feet from those frontage at the entrance. And you had to walk through the whole development down the road and go and deliver your trash that way. So City Hall to Frish's is about the equivalent of that. And then Ace's pickleball front door to Jenny's pickle, or to Jenny's Ice Cream. That's about the distance that you'd have to walk in order to. about the distance that you'd have to walk in order to take care of your trash. And then, I guess, the recommended distance is no more than two hundred and fifty feet, just off of some guidelines that I found. The garages underneath the units, there was discussion that they were going to be, the units were going to be eighteen to twenty-two feet wide. The eighteen-foot wide was going to be considered a two-car garage. And I don't do stand-up comedy, but if I did, I'd probably be able to open up with the line that a two-car garage is eighteen feet wide and get laughed off the stage. Just because there's not, if you park two cars in there, talk to anybody with an eighteen watt, eighteen-foot wide garage and they'll tell you they don't park two cars in there, which is fine. If you don't need to park two cars in there, then you can just park one car and put stuff off to the side. But when you're counting it for legally, for legal parking spaces, I think we also need to be realistic. If two cars are going to be in a townhome or an apartment unit, that we need to be providing a reasonable means for those cars to physically park in the development or provide additional surface-level parking spaces throughout the development for visitors, guests, and then the overflow cars. There was a discussion that there were thirty parking spaces provided throughout the development, but I think they counted on the screens that there were actually only like twelve or fifteen. So just something to think about. The twenty-foot to twenty-four-foot wide is generally recognized as adequate for two-car garages. And the other thing you have to think about is if you're promoting a city lifestyle with a bicycle or a grill or other thing, kayaks or other things that residents are going to need to store, you need to be providing space for those items. Sure, you can fit two cars in a garage, but you'll have just enough space to shimmy through and not leave any room for other resident amenities. And then, let's see. So in conclusion, thanks for listening. Developing land into something new is challenging, but it's also exciting. And I think that shouldn't be overlooked that this is a neat opportunity, that we have a developer that's interested in taking something that is currently just a parking lot and some natural green space and turning that into livable units for more residents to call Norwood home. I just want to make sure that this is benefiting Norwood before we, and the PUD that's wanting to be created, that this is benefiting the city in the way that we want it to benefit the city. And I would argue that there's some things that could be looked at differently before we, we say yes. Some things, so in summary, removal of the CRA incentives, push for owner occupied, demand usable green space, consider lifestyle impacts with the dumpster location and limited parking garage sizes and visitor parking spaces throughout the development. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak against this matter? You can step forward and state your name, please.
Tane Bull, thirty-nine forty-seven Elsmere. I'm speaking to oppose the current plan presented to council and urge a no vote. Earliest plans for the original approved PUD for the original parcel included office, homeownership through condos, individual apartment buildings, which have now been combined, bike and pedestrian considerations, and access from Harris to the parcel. Edits to that plan, including the CRA, have resulted in lower benefits to our citizens, our city's financial well-being, our school's fiscal integrity, and the fabric of engagement that Norwood has long enjoyed. PLK is designing an island within Norwood. PLK seeks to be a landlord-only, while making many demands such as destroying trees and green space, especially on Park Avenue, a deeded and protected parcel. Remember that an entertainment district is approved for Park Avenue through the previous council. This well-rewarded trend downward and a sleight of hand is what we can expect for the new project unless council does its job. Please push for a better vision and future. Consider these facts: no homeownership, no green space, increased noise to the neighborhood from seventy-one, further isolating and turning its back on the existing neighborhood, too dense, inappropriate, no pedestrian or bicycling infrastructure, no public right-of-way around or through, and I realize that's for both, no green buffer between interstate and residential Finally, council, should you vote for this plan, each ward has reason to assume that you will vote for a similar project in another ward. Understand that forces outside of Norwood seek to dictate resources and our future, specifically placement of bike trails, subsidized housing, green infrastructure, and chain of command and control of all of these. It is imperative that Norwood sustain its separation of powers and enforce home rule. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else to speak against this matter? If you can, please step forward and state your name.
Good afternoon. My name's Tony Boyle. I'm the homeowner at two-seven-three-nine Robertson Avenue, which is the direct next-door neighbor of two-seven-four-one. As the gentleman before me stated, there is a way to redevelop this PUD, which does not include tearing down my neighbor's house and shoving an eighteen-foot-wide access road between two neighbors, giving them five feet of green space between them, their house and the road. Addition to that is if this road is built, it would turn my lot and my neighbor's lot into a corner lot, which I believe requires additional setback criteria. And then a clarifying question for us here is, I understand this is the introductory reading and then we have other readings that, you know, are second and third. Where does the actual vote happen in that process? So I'm just confused why this is introductory and some are two and three. So can that, can this vote be approved based off the introductory? Does it go through additional hearings?
So on, on the agenda, those items that are on the agenda for second or third readings just means that those prior readings took place at another meeting? The introductory reading just means that council is considering that for the first time?
Okay, thank you. And before I start, I would just like to point out that for this meeting, proper notice was not provided again. For a public hearing, it's required that council place notice in the newspaper thirty days in advance and it is required first-class mail to any residents within two hundred feet twenty days prior. Again, this meeting has not been properly notified to residents, nor have any of the last five Planning Commission meetings been properly notified to residents. And I think it's important for us to take a step back and realize how we actually got here today. We're looking at phase three of Factory Fifty-two. Back on November sixth, Phase Two North for Factory Fifty-two was officially approved. It was approved with the amendment that all unresolved and open safety issues would be addressed before any building permits could be administered. And Mr. Ralph clarified, this included an updated traffic study as civil engineers found discrepancies in the previously submitted study, which was from November of 2020. So the last traffic study that we have for all this development is from November 2020. Of course, what happened in 2020, COVID. Businesses were closed, schools were closed, all workforces went remote. So taking traffic numbers from 2020 is obviously going to significantly reduce the actual traffic that is in this area. I think that is one major point to clarify. Additionally, the traffic study was all based on forecasted models. There is no actual traffic numbers or data in that model. Phase one has already been built. Why are we not addressing a real traffic study for phase one that's already been built? Phase two hasn't even been built yet. Why are we waiting and going skipping to approve a third phase when we have no idea what impact phase one or phase two is going to bring to the community, whether that's pedestrian safety, traffic, sound pollution from the highway from all the traffic, and the infrastructure of our roads and drainage? We know Robertson floods very easily there in that little park right in front of Factory Fifty-two. I think these are all things that need to be considered before we even discuss phase three. We're jumping so far ahead of ourselves. We don't have any actual data on phase one. Phase two hasn't even been built yet. And I'd just like to point out from the traffic study, I'm not sure if many people have looked at it or read it. Obviously, I'm not an expert in traffic studies. But the traffic study states that phase one would reduce AM traffic by eight percent and it would reduce PM traffic by seventeen percent. Even better is phase two, which is in addition to phase one, would reduce morning traffic by twelve percent and reduce PM traffic by thirty-eight percent. So I'm just extremely confused how over five hundred apartments, seventy-four townhomes, a food hall with nineteen restaurants, multiple breweries, dog park, pickleball courts, all your summer concerts, all your summer events, how does that reduce traffic by nearly fifty percent from what was there previously? What was there previously? U.S. Playing Cards Factory, which closed sixteen years ago. That factory has been empty for sixteen years. What else is there? Multicolored. Multicolored. I lived there for five years and I have not seen more than ten cars in that parking lot. So I'm just extremely confused to this traffic study and what we're basing all of our safety concerns on. We've been told multiple times by Planning Commission that lights aren't needed, you know, roads are in fine condition, but in all reality, that's not the case. And I know I kind of bored you there with some numbers, but if you just simply flip to the executive summary of the traffic study, it states, "It's necessary to reanalyze all studied intersections after the development is operational to determine which additional intersections will require roadway and/or operational improvements." This was not done for phase one. It can't be done for phase two because it's not even built yet. But we want to sit here and talk about approving phase three. Additionally, it says that intersection improvements are required. I believe this was for Park and Forest, I believe. There has been no changes to that intersection. So what the traffic study had asked to do just from phase one has not been implemented. We have not redone a traffic study after phase one has been built. We don't have actual real data from phase two and we're sitting here trying to discuss phase three. Traffic study was also, the data was pooled using nine entrances and exits from Factory Fifty-two. Obviously, that has been changed throughout the approval process. There is now nine different entrances. And the study also states that the traffic was divided equally for all exits and entries. That's obviously not the case in real life. Now, I will note that there was an addendum to the original November twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty traffic study back in September of twenty-twenty-four. Unfortunately, all that traffic study did was look at three specific intersections. It did not take anything into consideration of what was actually built at phase one, the real traffic that was going in and out of there. Sorry, lost my train of thought. But regardless, is, it's hard for us residents to sit up here and talk about a phase three when we have not actually looked at the impact that phase one has brought to our safety, our traffic, our infrastructure. We've already approved phase two with an amendment that all safety considerations would be updated. And as of November sixth, twenty-twenty-four, there would be an updated traffic study. There is no updated traffic study since November sixth. So right now, phase two, all that approval is in violation of the final approval Plan Code one-one-five-five-two-seven. Now, again, I'm not asking anyone here to, you know, tear down phase two or whatever it is. What I am asking is that we take a step back and we actually responsibly and legitimately look at the impact that phase one and phase two are going to bring to this community before plowing forward and approving phase three. And, and my last point is, it just to, to me and possibly other residents, it feels that this entire process has been extremely rushed and there has been many codified ordinances that have not been met. Specifically with, with the PUD submission, there are missing items in that PUD, so it should not even be ready for approval yet. But for, as I said, this meeting and the last five meetings, proper notice has not been sent out. Council even called a special meeting just to move the Factory Fifty-two approval up. That special meeting was scheduled for June nineteenth. We have preliminary and final votes back-to-back, even after residents voiced thirty, forty-five minutes of concerns, we move right into the next final vote and pass it through. Just last agenda, we had nine different agenda items, all for this one PUD, all worded specifically so that if multiple one, two, and three get denied, that we have other language to get this approved. This PUD submission does not meet requirements. It's missing information such as the total population density. We don't know how many three-bedroom versus how many two-bedroom. It doesn't have detailed sewer and drainage plans. We don't know if it's a retention versus detention pond. Common space requires twenty-five percent. The density of this is so thick and any of the green space that is there is on a steep hill next to seventy-one, so it's not usable. And those are just a few things. And another one is the fire chief. He came in and spoke and, and as I think Mick had mentioned, that, you know, this has been in the approval process for over a year and it's been continuously denied and denied and denied due to density concerns. Some, some changes have been made, some roads have been widened. The fire chief still recommends wider turnaround for fire trucks. This entire development is based on the absolute bare minimum requirements of everything, whether it be setbacks, whether it be turnaround lanes, as the gentleman before me talked about, the garages. Everything is built to the minimum set standard. And unfortunately, this development differs significantly from phase one and phase two because phase one and phase two are separate by themselves in a corner. This is taking fifty homes and dropping them into the backyards of thirty-plus current residents. It's not, you know, it's next to us. This is directly sandwiched in the backyards of thirty residents. I will be surrounded on three sides of my property by Factory Fifty-two. I'll have three-story homes towering over my backyard. I will have a retention or detention pond, as he said, it turns into a mess on my back fence line. And then I'll have fifty families driving in and out of a road that's directly next to me, five feet from my house. As we stated, there's other ways to look at this development. You know, if we remove some of that density, we don't need that access road. We don't need to destroy a perfectly fine home. We don't need to destroy the lives of two neighbors and put another road right next to them and create two corner lots and have cars and lighting going up and down that street twenty-four-seven. So I would just like to, you know, ask that possibly, you know, we look at all these safety concerns and some of the codified ordinances that, that are in violation currently before we proceed with moving forward with, with phase three. I think it's very important for us to take a step back, pause, and, and follow what we approved in the first place, which is addressing traffic after each portion of the bill to see what that impact is on the community before we move forward with approving all these other developments. And my last point, and I'm taking a lot of time, is we're at phase three now. When does this stop? You know, in, in, in one of the previous PUDs, it states that there's additional plans for office building. So my concern is, you know, PLK is going to continue to build and build. I'm already surrounded on three sides. They're going to keep buying up property. They're just going to boot everyone out. And, and you know, big developer comes in and we have all these codified ordinances to protect the residents that live here. And a lot of these are being skipped over throughout the approval process and it's being rushed through. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak against this matter? If you can, please state your name.
My name's Diane Farrell. I live at two-seven-four-nine Robertson Avenue. I am approximately, there will be two houses between my house and the new driveway road. The house that's there now is torn down. I oppose the PUD overlay on that and the teardown of the house to build a driveway there. It's going to cause increased noise for our homes. It's going to cause loss of green space. I had a beautiful red-shouldered hawk in my yard a couple of days ago. Once those trees are gone, we lose so much habitat for a bird. days ago. Once those trees are gone, we lose so much habitat for birds and the green space. There will be increased heat. Trees naturally absorb water. It's just so sad to lose all that. It's just a shame to lose all that. They could scale it back, keep some of the trees. I would love to see some of the trees saved. It's just going to create additional headaches safety-wise. We have speeding now on Robertson. We have increased traffic. As Tony stated, we need a traffic study. We have a new driveway, I understand, coming out of the existing PLK development. We will have one going in. And now we're going to, on South Robertson, we're going to bring a new driveway out that supposedly is going to have a right turn only. But from what I've seen and heard, I don't think there's anything there that will keep people from turning left. So it's going to make Robertson Avenue driving through there like the wild wild breath traffic-wise. I mean, it's just, it's bad now, but this can only increase it. Pedestrian-wise, we have a lot of walk-through traffic there. This is going to make it nearly impossible to traverse through there safely. My other concern is the water, detention, retention, whatever we're going to call it. If, as the gentleman spoke earlier, said that is not maintained properly, another concern is we have mosquito-borne illnesses on the uptick. We've had West Nile in Madisonville recently. So that's a concern, too. Will there be mosquito control there? Parking, it's too dense. It's too dense. The PLK rep said there's enough parking for everyone based on the number of units there, that they each have their assigned parking. It's good to go. Parking will spill out onto Beach and Robertson. There are certain times of year, holidays, graduations, Christmas, Thanksgiving, people have, not only the people that live in their immediate housing unit, they have friends, they have family come visit, they have parties. They have to park somewhere. That will be on Beach and Robertson. I think that's basically it, but I oppose it. I think it's way over dense. I think the entrance and exit need to be on the same area on Beach and not tear a house down. That's a perfectly wonderful little house that fits perfectly in the neighborhood and make additional traffic and congestion and confusion there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter?
Bishop Sonny James. I, a little bit different of a take. First, commend Mick with PLK for standing for his project. I also commend Joe, Dana Bowles, Tony, and Diane for freely speaking their minds. Counsel, we've come a long way over the years. One of the things that irritate me is when we can hear concerned residents stand before us as a responsible body and express concerns that, to them at least, seem the processes go way before the consideration of the people who are personally well-invested into this community. You all have a responsibility to make sure that all of the facts are looked upon. I'm a big supporter of Factory 52, have always been. But for the record, I'm a bigger supporter of the people. And with that being said, I'm going to, I wasn't prepared to do this, but I am just hearing my residents talk. At my next community meeting, I'm going to address this with some of our local leaders. And we need to help the residents be comforted. It is apparent that protocols and processes go out before we sometimes show the residents that they are the priority. And let me say again, for the record, I'm a big supporter of Factory 52, but I'm a bigger supporter of the people. And so for those of you who have expressed concerns, I want you to know that you have one hundred percent support coming behind you to just make sure that we as legislators or the legislative body really prioritize the people and not who I love, those folks there at PLK. But we cannot prioritize a business or a business owner over the people. And so my strong encouragement to you as the voice for the people, to strongly, strongly consider listening to the people. And I'm not saying that you're going to win. But what I'm saying is, at least listen. It goes a long, long way with reducing stress and reducing problems that could have been prevented by people just feeling heard and to be given statutes or ordinances or laws. And here we are talking about stuff that it really makes us look bonehead. And I know we're better than this. We've come a long way, Norwood. Let's continue to work together, but we've got to put the people first. And so I boldly stand, saying that we will ensure that the voices of the residents in Norwood are heard. And my prayer is that our administrators just do what's right by the people. Again, let me say, I'm not saying there's going to be anything wrong with PLK's plan. I'm not standing here saying that. I'm just saying, guys, make sure you listen to the people before you allow a developer or anybody to do something where people feel they haven't been heard or their rights have been violated. And so I'm standing with the people to say, we will make sure that the rights of the people are heard and make sure that our administrators understand that the power is with the people, always has been and always will be.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter? Anyone else to speak against this matter? Anyone else to speak against this matter? Seeing we have heard from those in favor and those against, I will go ahead and declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to the second public hearing. Notice of public hearing, Norwood City Council. Following item will appear on the agenda as a public hearing on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty PM. On June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Norwood Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding item number three of the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five Norwood Planning Commission agenda. Number three, Mick Oaks, Associate Developer with PLK Communities, requesting the city place a planned unit development overlay zoning district, PUD, on the point one-two-five acreage known as twenty-seven forty-one Robertson Avenue, Norwood, Ohio, four-five-two-one-two, Hamilton Auditor Book six-five-one, page zero-zero-three-zero, parcel zero-one-nine-four-dash-zero-zero, located within a neighborhood business zoning district, NBD. I will go ahead and declare this public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor of this matter? Please step forward.
Mick Oaks with PLK Communities. So I just want to address a few things from some of the public comments, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So we did in twenty twenty have the first traffic impact study that was done. Just want to clarify, even though it was, yes, twenty twenty during COVID, it takes historical data from years in the past. So it's really not just a snapshot of twenty twenty. It also then looks at our future density calculations, and that's how it branches out to our full traffic impact study. We did go back and update that with the approval of the Robertson North or MCC Phase Two PUD application back in September before we had any building permits issued as one of the requirements. In a quick synopsis of what that update was, it showed that when U.S. Playing Card and Multicolor Corporation were both fully functioning and operational at the completion of our Phase Two and what we're calling Robertson South, our density and peak trips are still less than the three times a day that all, both of those factories turned over and had masked exodus and entrance of shift workers coming on and on to the site, on and off the site. So it was essentially saying that the infrastructure right now could support it. Obviously, we will continue with any other requirements for traffic impact study that are needed and make those changes as those studies show us that we need to do. We have gone back and forth with the fire department as well as the building department. Actually, earlier today, I was speaking with Chief McCabe as well as Assistant Chief. We have met all of their requirements and their comments going on a year now, so they feel comfortable and in support with us as well. And finally, the last thing, there was a couple of comments about us continuing to buy up. We do not plan to, this piece of property came with the Multicolor acquisition. We do not have any more anticipation of encroaching further into the residential zone. This is something that we feel is a piece of land that this development fits the neighborhood feel. It's a townhome. It's something that across the street is already approved, and we think it's a really great fit. But we do not plan to keep encroaching and growing and morphing into more and more of these neighborhood districts. So like you said earlier, be happy to answer any more questions as they arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone else to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone to speak against this matter?
Joe Kaufman spoke previously. So speaking against this, I believe this public hearing is for specifically the property at twenty-seven forty-one. So if we approve this, this would lead to the demolition of the single-family residence at that address. And I just want to reiterate that it is possible for the development to proceed without taking this residential property and turning it into a driveway, an access road. The impact to that would be potentially lesser number of units being placed on the property there. And then also to the comment of not envisioning buying any more property, the idea of buying the Multicolor site and having this parcel, this parcel that we're talking about right now was not included in the additional or in the Multicolor site. This is a separate piece of property. So when you have somebody standing up here and saying, we don't intend to buy any additional property, when we're speaking about purchasing additional property to tear down, modify, and build a driveway, there's residences down that strip on Robertson that could become something different, not necessarily out of the plane right now. But there clearly is still a hunger for some land to be able to build what we want to build, what wants to be built over here at South Robertson by impacting the current infrastructure that's there.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter?
I feel strongly that this should be tabled until you decide on the larger, the earlier issue on the public hearing that was placed first. I don't know, can't remember the number three.
Anyone else to speak against this matter?
Just want to point out that this hearing is to approve the PUD, yet the other hearing that we have not heard yet is to add two-seven-four-one into this PUD. So again, we're going out of order on these hearings. Again, as the gentleman stated, the destruction of two-seven-four-one is absolutely not needed for this project. Things can be implemented or the density can be reduced to avoid the absolute teardown of that house. And would also just like to state that for the residents that are extremely close to this construction zone, we have some serious concerns, you know, about our houses, the foundation, and our yards as well. You know, I didn't have too many concerns, you know, months ago, but just recently, you know, actually in the last seven days, four days of that construction has started before seven AM, which is not allowed. And when they are laying down the roads and they are using the big steel drum to paver down the rocks, I have videos of my house literally shaking and rambling. And that's across the street from me. So when that, when that, when those machines are next to me, five feet from my house, I do have some very, very serious concerns with what implications and damages my property or my house is going to incur from those. And just to clarify again, Phase Two North was approved on eleven-six. There was a required traffic study upon eleven-six. The amendment was submitted September. So there has not been an updated traffic study that was required for Phase Two North. It still has not been submitted. And if you look at the amendment to the traffic study, Robertson Road and Beach Road were not even in the traffic study for the amendment. I think those are two extremely important roads, considering that this development is on both of those roads. I would think those intersections need to be included in an updated traffic study. Those intersections were not included in the addendum that was submitted prior to Phase Two North approval. And in the, in the traffic study, it also states that some intersections may now require a light, but based off of all the new rerouting and roads, they're assuming that cut-through traffic is going to cut down by fifty percent. So for that reason, they don't need traffic lights. I think making assumptions and forecasting models, again, on a traffic study for five-hundred-and-twenty-five apartments, seventy-four townhomes, plus another forty-eight towns on Phase Three, all the other extra stuff that are in that complex, I think that a traffic study would be, at a bare minimum, reasonable and legitimate to request, to ask for before we approve Phase Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against the matter?
Hello again. I'm against that overlay, tearing down the house, doing the driveway. The simple solution is make it less dense, less units seems to solve a lot of the problems. Another concern that I forgot to raise was the driveway, if it does come out of there, right now, there's parking on both sides of where that exit way will be. So you're going to have a driveway coming out between parked cars. Not safe. That construction issues. I've seen giant pieces of concrete picked up and dropped. They shake my house. Well, they don't now. It's done. But when that was going on, and it was not a one-time event, it was several times. I believe when and if that driveway goes through there, it will affect those surrounding homes. It's just too close. It's just too close to have construction equipment feet away from an existing home. And I think the simple solution is just make it less dense and for PLK to have some consideration that they're coming into an existing neighborhood with residents that have been there. And we just want to enjoy our homes. We want our peace and quiet. We just want to live there and go about our business and come home at the end of the day and relax. None of us want to come up here and complain and come to meetings like every few weeks, but we have to. I mean, otherwise, no one pays attention. But I just think it needs to be less dense. It's going to make more noise. My other concern is lights. As Tony said, there will be traffic in and out all hours of the day and night. When the cars come back through there, there's going to be lights shining directly in the back of our homes. I have spotlights shining in my second floor bedroom now. I would like to at least have the back of my house not have lights shining in. I would just urge you to require less density there. I would just urge you to require less density there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter? Anyone else to speak against this matter? Anyone else to speak against this matter? Seeing that we have heard from those for and against, I will go ahead and declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to the third and final public hearing. Notice of public hearing, Norwood City Council. The following item will appear on the agenda for a public hearing on April 26, 2025 at 7:30 PM. On June 19, 2025, the Norwood Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding item number four of the June 19, 2025 Norwood Planning Commission agenda. Number four, Mick Oaks, Associate Developer with PLK Communities, is applying to expand the existing 2.839 Neighborhood Business Zoning District with a Planned Unit Development Overlay Zoning District, NBD/PUD, south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach Street, Norwood, Ohio 45212. Hamilton County Auditor's Book 651, Page 0030, Parcel 0206, to include the .125 acreage, known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Norwood, Ohio 45212. Hamilton Auditor Book 651, Page 0030, Parcel 0194-00. I will go ahead and declare this public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor of this matter, please step forward and state your name.
Mick Oaks with PLK Communities. The only thing I had to add was the acquisition of the 2741 Robertson property. That was initially not involved in our first PUD submission, but that came at the request with the building departments and the city officials that we needed to find a second form of egress. One thing I would like to note, as though, yes, that would be a net loss of one home on Robertson, it would be a net addition of 44 additional housing units on the back half. So that is something that we work closely with the city on in following that ordinance code. We do think it's going to be a good inclusion to the property as well as MCC North for that access on Robertson. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone else to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone to speak against this item?
Joe Kaufman. The feedback that I saw with the planning commission and the building department was that the two points of access of egress would be acceptable to keep the roadways to a narrow width. Or the other option was if there was going to be one point of access, to provide a wide enough access point for fire trucks to enter and turn around and then exit the property. So there's still, like, it's still fine to do a single point, was my understanding. And then we'll just see what happens with, I guess, the other two ordinances and if this one even gets to be presented or voted on.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter?
Tony Boyle. As the lady previously mentioned, none of us want to be here and complain and come to these regular meetings, but I do ask that all of you, please put yourselves in our shoes. I live directly next to Factory 52. I have dealt with construction for five years now. We are now going to be destroying my neighbor's house to build an access road. I will be surrounded on all three sides of my property by Factory 52. It is not needed if we reduce the density of this development. The PUD requires 25% of open green space. That is not being met. In addition, there's been talk about, you know, a right turn only or a left turn. That Robertson Road is extremely busy. As soon as you come from Hyde Park, I'm sorry, as soon as you come from Oakley into Norwood, there is a large bend where you go over the bridge, and there is two lanes that merge into one right in front of my house. When I try to turn left, I have cars speeding, trying to merge over when I'm at a dead stop. It's a very serious safety concern. Moving forward from that, we're now going to have two entrance and exit roads on Robertson for Phase Two North that are also going to be coming in to Robertson. Now we want to build an exit road onto Robertson as well. So we will have three exit roads coming onto Robertson in addition to Robertson's already heavy traffic and poor road conditions. When I'm backing out of my driveway, there is parked cars up and down that entire road. I physically cannot see the cars that are coming this way, and I cannot see the cars coming this way because parked cars here and a bend here on the bridge. And then we're talking about putting an exit road next to me. If the cars turn right, that wouldn't be a problem for me. If they turn left, as soon as I go back out of my driveway, there is nothing stopping that car from turning left. And I'm fighting one, two, three, four, five, five different direction, traffic patterns to get out of my driveway, and I feel it's very unsafe as well as all the other residents on our road. So again, I just ask that you guys, please put yourself in our position. You know, we don't want to complain, but you know, we have to protect our right to privacy as well, you know, our right to, you know, live a peaceful life and not have nuisances, you know, next to us. And again, five years of construction, we got another year and a half or so on Phase Two, who knows how long Phase Three is going to be. So you know, we're not talking about, you know, a short-term plan where I'm complaining because I've had a, you know, distraction or, you know, things that have disrupted my, my life or my level of living. This has been five years, we got two more years plus another. So you know, it just drags out, and I just ask you guys, please to put yourself in our positions and think about the residents of this community.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter?
Again, I'm against the exit coming out on Robertson. It's just going to add to confusion in the traffic pattern. There will be accidents there. I've had a car in my front yard, had my car and my neighbor's car totaled. If this goes through, I'm not sure how long it's going to be before I have another car in my front yard, and I really would like to not deal with that again. It's just creating a situation that's unsafe, it's unsafe for pedestrians, it's adding to the traffic confusion. And just for the neighbors personally, it just, it decreases our enjoyment of our homes. I mean, we don't want to deal with the lights, we don't want to deal with the noise, we don't want to hear somebody's radio playing coming up basically through our backyards. The construction that's really, really close to residences, and I don't understand how they can come through there and not do damage to existing structures. It's just too dense, and I think, I think the roadway there is just a really, really bad idea. And I just hope, like Tony said, that you take all of us into consideration and the people that live there, and that we want to have some enjoyment and have peace and quiet in our homes and not deal with traffic accidents in front of our house every day and worrying about trying to get in and out and do so safely. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter? Anyone else to speak against this matter?
I just, I'm not a homeowner in that neighborhood. My issue, my interest is in the design process and that we get really great design in Norwood. And that, you know, there's such a thing as change management, where you're managing change, and design is a huge part of that. So I would like council to consider its role this way. So often, I would be in a presentation, it'd be a group, maybe myself, various situations. You do a presentation for the client, and sometimes the client doesn't like it. Sometimes you need revision, you need big revisions, sometimes you get a kill fee. You are the client. The citizens are the client. Now, we'd all like our neighborhoods to stay the same forever. Of course we would. I want to see the big trees stay forever, that's not realistic. So it would be unrealistic for me as a designer to have a big presentation and have the client think, "Oh gee, I don't want to hurt her feelings," or, "Gee, I got to go along to get along." That's not how it works. Now is the moment. Sonny said, "The citizens have the power." Not right now. Council has power. So you're the client, they're the designer. You don't like the design, the design doesn't meet what I would call the design brief, which is our PUD overlay. You heard 25% green space. It doesn't meet that. Nobody said, "That's a design criteria, don't show me anything I don't want to see." You know? In my world, people say, "I don't like red, don't show it to me." Okay. So just think of yourselves as, unfortunately, the buck stops at your desk. It's a drag, I know. You thought being on council was going to be, you're always going to be popular. That's not how it works. So consider that.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter? Anyone else to speak against this matter?
I promise to keep this quick. For over a year now, at every single meeting, I have addressed traffic concerns on Robertson Avenue. I please ask that you guys seriously consider, just like every single other surrounding city in this, in this area, has implemented speed bumps on the road or possibly a radar reader. I think that would go a long way. Citizens here for over a year have been stating traffic issues on Robertson Avenue. That is extremely minimal thing and a very low-cost thing that would definitely help address traffic in the meantime. Now, so I ask, you know, if you guys could look at maybe possibly putting, whether it's permanent or temporary, I know cities around us have done both. I'm assuming that road is going to be completely redone at some point of this construction anyways. So whether it's temporary or permanent, but putting speed bumps in just like every other single city has done in this area, and possibly, again, putting a radar reader just like you guys did on Smith Road, I think that would be a very good implementation on Robertson Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against this matter? Anyone else to speak against this matter? Anyone else to speak against this matter? Hearing from all of those speaking for and those against, I hereby declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to request to address council. We have two that were not pertaining to agenda items. The first is Bishop Sonny James.
Again, greetings. Let me first, before we get started, apologize to Mayor Williams' family. I was not able to be available for his home-going service, and I certainly want his family to know that we have to pay respect to the best of our ability to all those who have served this fine community. With that being said, I'm, I'm putting together an initiative which I've spoken about before, which will be called the Called Into Action. And if some of you aren't aware of what it is, you can Google me, Bishop Sonny James, S-O-N-N-Y, and there'll be a ton of my news feeds, news stories, and you can hear what we're doing. I was just at our Norwood football game on Thursday in St. Bernard, where a group of youth, with all the adults around, a group of youth went and they started fighting. Now, any of you who know me should know, we ain't scared. And so the fight was dismantled, and as I told the athletic director, as long as I am there, these young people know who I am and they know what I stand for. And I want to let you all know that Norwood has been doing a great job, but we really have to focus on this youth crime and gun violence, and that's what I'm committed to do. But I need your support and your help when we bring our programming to this community. Most of you should know that I, I'm the biggest, one of the biggest cheerleaders Norwood will ever have. I also want to announce that it's kind of early, but in October, we will do again our annual march on the streets of Norwood, celebrating the legacy and life of Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth, who was the single most important individual to get Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to go to Alabama. So I want you all to begin to prepare for that. I applaud Mayor Snyder, he was standing there in the crowd, very proud to do so, and people still talk about that. And so we want to begin to do that. Some of you who are not familiar with our marches, I'm so excited that we have a bunch of Xavier students here, because when there was racial negatives posted on their campus, I personally led a march with all of Xavier executives and leadership to stand together. With that being said, I'm putting together here in the next two weeks, a come-together rally, where we're going to repeat what James Bonzel and Andrew Clark and I did years ago, when we forsake red versus blue, and we came together and we knocked on doors to say hi to residents. Well, now I'm taking that same model statewide, citywide and statewide. I was real pleased to meet with Corey Bowman recently, and we met at Factory 52, my hotspot with Tweety's. And it was supposed to be a one-hour meeting, we ended up meeting for three hours. And since then, he and I, he calls me almost daily. And for those of you who don't know who Mr. Bowman is, he's the brother of, our Vice President of the United States of America. And what I'm attempting to do, and what we will do, is bring together people from across the aisle, to be able to talk to each other, learn about each other, and hear every perspective. And I'm trusting that as you hear of these meetings, you all are welcome because we're in Norwood. So you have a standing invitation. Just don't bring any private or special agenda items. As I close, be in prayer, I've been meeting with the lawyers and the receivers and tenants that are really struggling with this whole landlord initiative, so please be in prayer for them as they go. I was excited on Sunday morning at 8:00 AM to run into runner is player there at the Wasson Way. A minority group full of runners, excited to be in Norwood, and that's what I advocate for. My last comment is, as you know, when we did the national boycott, we just got announcement that the CEO for Target resigned as a direct result of our national push. But we're now going to be making such pushes locally, and I pray that Norwood will stand with us. God bless you all, you'll be hearing more of that in the coming days.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Dana Bowler.
Sorry, I've been up here a lot, I won't be here for another six months. It's been a long day, I'm tired, and so I do have a thing that I'm very frustrated and angry about that I wanted to bring to council. And since Sonny is here, I thought, why not? So lately, I have been driving by Stony's, and Stony's seems to be getting progressively more dilapidated, and there's trash and junk and chairs and cigarette butts out there. Now, we have a lot of little bars around, the wood bar, grass rail, and they all manage to sweep their sidewalk and keep everything up. Now, last council, Sonny, you came in here with a bunch of people that practically begged for their liquor license, and you took up for them. And, you know, "Oh, we have food and we do this and we're a community," and you really took up for them, and you go around representing Norwood. And I would like you to represent, to go to Sonny's, is one of the projects I would like you to do is to help Sonny's clean up their act, because I don't think the way this is rolling out, they really deserve their liquor license anymore, it's an eyesore. It's an eyesore. So there's a project for you, okay? Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees of council, and that is a finance committee report from July 8th.
To the Honorable City of Norwood, to the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, we, your Committee of Finance Budget Audit and Claims, was, to whom was referred, standing reports and claims, beg leave to submit the following report. The Auditor's Office is looking into purchasing a license from Monday.com, a project management software, to track progress on our road to recovery, to our financial recovery. A new purchasing card manual has been given to the department, department heads for review. Claims reviewed with two claims needing more information. Respectfully submitted, Jeff Gerton, John Brayden, Emily Fransen, and John Moore.
Mrs. Bowler.
I make a motion that we accept the committee report.
Motion by Mrs. Bowler to accept the committee report. Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I'll vote yes.
Mrs. Bowler?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to third readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance amending designated locations within the City of Norwood for the posting of ordinances, resolutions, statements, orders, proclamations, notices, and reports required by law. Mrs. Fransen.
I move that we have the third reading.
Motion by Mrs. Fransen to have the third reading. Mrs. Bowler.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowler. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I'll vote yes.
Mrs. Bowler?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the third reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance amending designated locations within the City of Norwood for the posting of ordinances, resolutions, statements, orders, proclamations, notices, and reports required by law.
Thank you. Mrs. Fransen.
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Fransen to pass the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Bowler.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowler. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Royce, I'll vote yes.
Mrs. Bowler?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is an ordinance accepting the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council regarding Norwood tax incentives under various commercial CRA agreements and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Bowler.
I move we have the reading of the ordinance.
The third reading?
The third reading.
Motion by Mrs. Bowler to have the third reading of the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. My understanding was that we were expecting to maybe hear from Ms. Fitzgerald tonight as it pertains to this matter, so I'd like to invite her up, if that's all right.
Yes. Ms. Fitzgerald?
Good evening. I'm Catherine Fitzgerald with Alloy Development. We actually oversee the annual monitoring of the commercial CRA agreements. So we did conduct that for the City of Norwood. We've done that every year as required by law, since we've administered the CRA program on behalf of Norwood. Basically, the Tax Incentive Review Council meets. There are two representatives from the City of Norwood, Dan Hughes and Paul Smith, this year. These are recommendations to council, so council is free to act however they choose to act. These, again, are recommendations. Just to summarize some of the recommendations, Encompass Health has been out of compliance with jobs since 2021. They've basically met 70% of their job goal. We're recommending, therefore, that the agreement be reduced by 30%, which would be a 10-year agreement, and it would expire in, I believe, 2025. Ventura Commons is just a change of ownership name LLC for two of their properties. And then 1027 Group LLC requested that their agreement be rescinded. They weren't seeing much tax benefit for it, so they actively sought having the agreement rescinded.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Fitzgerald? Mrs. Fransen.
Thank you so much for coming, first of all. Also, are there any one, any of these agreements that we should kind of be on notice about? Like, you want to continue them now, but there's some significant concerns that the board has?
We have a status report that's attached with each of the agreements. We've been informed by PLK that the quality in agreement, they will seek amending that this year. Construction has not begun, and it's supposed to be completed in 2025. So it does go through a summary of any concerns that we might have in the notes, but they are all in compliance other than those that I've mentioned, for the reasons that I've
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald. With regard to some of the, let's say, subject properties in here, I notice a couple of them are expiring in 2026. And just, I guess, as a philosophical question, is there, is there, working with other communities in Hamilton County, is there any sort of, like, let's say, risk associated with those businesses in the sense of, well, our, our sweet deal is ending in 2026, right? Maybe we should see if another community will give us a sweet deal. Is there any kind of flight risk in that regard that we should be aware of?
I mean, there's always a risk of a business leaving. I think a relocation has many different facets, and it's very expensive. So directly, probably not, but there's always a risk of losing a business. So we do follow up with the businesses. We meet with them, we talk with them, find out how the project's going, any, any issues that they might be having, for instance, with the city or anything like that. But again, these are the commercial agreements, so the city monitors the residential CRAs.
So no, I think what I hear you saying is basically no incremental risk above sort of the baseline risk of any business moving to any other place?
I would say not that I'm aware of, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Snyder.
Just like that, Catherine Fitzgerald works for the city as our economic development advisor, and she is working on a routine basis with CEOs and with business leaders within our community, trying to get really her thumb on the pulse of that, making sure that we're reaching out to them and staying in touch. So if they even entertain that thought, they're hopefully talking to Catherine first, and we will cut that off at the pass, because we don't want that flight risk. So, but this is, this is one aspect of what their organization does for the city.
That's correct. And I will say, several small businesses, for example, work with our business coach, who provides free one-on-one business coaching. So several, these businesses do work with them as well.
Mrs. Bowler.
I just wanted to note that oftentimes with the CRAs, it's something that we factor into it, is the property investment that the businesses are committing to, and you'll see that on the chart underneath the goals and achieved progress per agreement. From that perspective, I would, I would like to think that any business has invested that amount of money into developing a physical location, wouldn't want to spend some more
Mrs. Hoover.
I just, I noticed that there is just maybe one or two that didn't have, like, the employees that we were looking for, but it looks like most exceeded the goals, some by a lot. Can you explain how that impacts the Norwood economy and our budget, and our budget income?
The agreements were written by the city, so we don't write the agreements, we simply monitor them. So it is true that several agreements don't have job goals, for example. If a project exceeds goals, particularly if they exceed their job goal, that's a very good thing for the city. Your, I believe, your number one source of revenue is income tax, so that's really the, if you would call it a quid pro quo, you're looking for jobs and return for tax abatement. So that's a very good thing when jobs exceed the goal.
Any other questions? Mr. Moore.
Yes, thank you. You know, I think something interesting that stands out to me as I, as I read through these and, and notice kind of the original exemptions granted per agreement in terms of real property and duration and things like that, you know, stands out to me as far as the, the number of them that are in this kind of like 49% 12-year program, if you will. And so, you know, naturally, those would have been issued, let's say, 2013, 2019, kind of in that, that timeframe. I guess my question is, in, so Norwood, a decade ago, was in a certain place, and the incentive that was offered is, is what was offered. My personal opinion would be that Norwood is a better, but more desirable place in the eyes of folks 10 years on, and the 49% and 12 is now more generous at this point. And I guess I would just be interested in, in the baseline of, do you see other communities becoming more generous in, in sort of the lifespan of, of your working? Are other communities becoming less generous with their incentive packages? And just any observation as you sort of work with communities across the county, the trend you observe in, sort of the appetite to be increasingly generous with, with packages?
Okay, sure. So we did not establish the CRA here. We do provide that service to some communities. This was done, I believe, 2009. I think it was established. 2023, the state law changed, so 75% is allowed now. Norwood is probably the only community that interprets it very conservatively and allows for 74%. Previous to that, it was actually 50%. Again, Norwood's the only one that we work with that interprets that as 49%, which is just a more conservative interpretation. I don't want to necessarily open a whole can of worms, but I will say that we normally have a point system that we recommend, not so much for the percentage, but the number of years, with a variety of criteria based on policy goals. It could be any number of things. It varies by community. There's a lot of flexibility with the CRA program. So, for example, some of the communities that we've worked with don't want to incentivize, I, I think of Newtown, they put a cap on the, the maximum incentive for housing. With Ivy Hills there, they wanted to really incentivize the lower-cost homes. There, you know, there's a township that doesn't incentivize multifamily, for example. That wasn't one of their policy goals. When we come in and set up a CRA, we discuss those possibilities, again, with council establishing the policy based upon what they want to accomplish. So, for example, the City of Norwood could theoretically take a look at your residential CRAs and decide, these are the two areas that we want to focus on, and revise the CRA, for example. That could happen. With commercial CRAs, you could actually have, you know, based upon criteria, base a number of years upon that. For, you know, and again, we can propose different criteria that communities use. That would be a policy issue. We, we simply, you know, map out the possibilities.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowler, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to have the third reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I'll vote yes.
Mrs. Bowler?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the third reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance accepting the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council regarding Norwood tax incentives under various commercial CRA agreements and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowler.
I move that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Bowler to pass the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any further discussion? Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. With regard to section three on this, like, the ordinance should not be construed to affect a cancellation, relocation, modification, et cetera. There's sort of like a separate piece, so is this just like accepting the recommendation, or is this actually enforce the, like, enforce it? Does that make sense?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, accepts the recommendation, and if we're going to cancel one, if we're going to modify one, there will be a separate ordinance presented to council, and so that I have it on my list to do for the next meeting. And, but I need to make sure that notice, if you're going to cancel one, you need to send out a 60-day letter that you are, you know, you're given, you're out of compliance, you get 60 days to cure. So there's some, some technical things that have to happen. But yes, that's the point, that this actually doesn't affect anything, that there will be ordinances later.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowler, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I'll vote yes.
Mrs. Bowler?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to introductory readings. The first is an ordinance approving a zone change from Neighborhood Business District, NBD, to Neighborhood Business District Planned Unit Development, NBD slash PUD, over the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, parcel 651-0030-0194. Yes.
Just a couple of quick notes. Counsel has a limited amount of time to act on the next three, and so counsel has to vote it up or down tonight, or if Mr. Oaks is willing to grant counsel an extension on that time, then counsel could do one or two readings and consider it later. But right now, it's either pass it, or, and actually, I have denial motions available, or denial ordinances that have been written that are ready to just make copies and pass out if counsel wants to do that. I just want you to know that as you go into this discussion.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowler.
Can I ask why there is not an emergency clause?
For zoning, it's just, that's the way that those ordinances are handled, that you, the language has been as soon as allowed by law.
Any further questions for Mr. Moore? Otherwise, we are looking for a motion on this matter. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. So effectively, are you, are we, I mean, we effectively have to pass them in all three readings, I think is what you're saying, even though there's not an emergency clause on here?
If you want to pass them, yes. Tonight would be the night, because you have to do that. Or request that the developer can grant an extension on that, on that period of time, and you can maybe put it off for a couple of weeks. The alternative is, if counsel's like, not sure we want to talk about it, but we're not comfortable passing it tonight, you can say, we're going to deny, we're going to vote these down unless you give us an extension. It's kind of generally the way that can kind of work. That happens more in the planning commission than council, but that's kind of where we are.
Mrs. Bowler.
Is this an appropriate time to discuss that process?
Mr. Moore, do we need a motion, or we can go ahead and discuss?
You're running the meeting. You just have to.
We're open to discuss. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'm just a little concerned that there's no emergency clause on here. It's, it's, and we have all these residents coming up and speaking against this, and I feel like it might be a little deceiving that it is to me. I thought we had three readings in, in, in six weeks, and now to hear that we have to vote on it, and in my opinion, that's a little deceiving. So because of that, I'm, I'm, I think I might be against, I mean, you know, I'm not against the actual, you know, I'm not against it. I don't know, I'm just a little concerned about this being a little deceiving. That's my comments.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you. Just offering my perspective as a former council member. So the emergency clause just allows the ordinance to go into effect immediately. It doesn't have any impact whatsoever, and whether you do one reading, two reading, or three readings, it's just allows it to go into effect immediately. In order to do that, I think you have to have two-thirds vote to pass an ordinance with an emergency clause. The suspending the rules and doing three readings, that does require three-quarters of council, so I think you'd need six of the seven council members to vote that. Just how the City of Cincinnati handles things like that is usually, all of the council members vote to do the reading, and then they have their individual votes to do, like, if they're going to pass or not pass an ordinance. I'm not saying you have to do that, I'm just saying, that's kind of like the tradition, at least Cincinnati City Council has done, is when they are in situations like this where something is time-sensitive, but they still want to vote no, so they'll vote for the readings, and then they will vote no on the actual ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Bowler.
Just a
Just a point of clarification on that. Because of the wording of this, would we not need to introduce a separate ordinance that would deny it if we were choosing to vote it down?
Uh, based on what Mr. Moore stated, you have those available if council so chooses to take that action.
If council wants to, um, deny, then I've got ordinances to deny, but we don't put those on the agenda and pass them out with the packets because that creates, we use, when I started as letter director, we used to, and it created a tremendous amount of confusion. Why are there, like tonight, there would be six ordinances about this development on the agenda and they're trying to work through all that. So we have the ones to approve it if you want to do that. If you don't want to approve it, if council, majority of council, uh, wants to say no or six members want to say no, then I'll make copies and we'll, we'll have a little recess. I'll make copies and pass those around and, and we'll add those to the agenda and you, and council can move that way.
Mrs. Hoover?
Would it be possible to have the discussion before the vote? To have the reading? Or we just do the reading?
We're having discussion right now.
Okay. Then I've got a bunch of questions. My first is about the, um, there, there was a comment that there wasn't proper notice. I'm curious if we have, maybe that's a question for Mr. Powers about the proper notice that was sent out?
I can't speak to the, to the mailings. I can speak to the, uh, posting in the Inquirer. That was part of the reason why this public hearing did not take place on August 12th. We had it scheduled for this meeting instead so that we could meet the requirement of the posting for at least 30 days in a publication.
So this, this public hearing met the requirement?
Correct. For, for all three, for all three of those.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I guess my question would be for Mr. Powers in terms of residents, do we know that they received notice in a timely fashion?
Uh, we did have, uh, one meeting of the planning commission that was canceled to make sure that we had enough time out for that public notice.
So there was public, public notice was made for all of them?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Powers is speaking of the postcards that were sent out for the planning commission meeting. I'm not sure if he knows about the postcards sent out for the council meeting. They were sent out for the council meeting, for the meeting tonight. He does not know. Okay.
I would have to check with, with Angela on that one. Something I, I can check with the clerk of council's office to confirm if those were sent pertaining to the council meeting. If those notifications were mailed, I can confirm that the public hearing notifications were advertised the 30 days prior. Mrs. Hoover?
Um, another question. It's my understanding that the green space, the green space criteria was met and I'm wondering if there can be any verification by that from anyone in the audience, or maybe it's you, Mr. Oaks. I know that in, I guess I'm going to ask you to come back up. My understanding was that it was met if you looked at both the, the parcels separately as well as if they were considered a singular entity, which they kind of are for this process.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We, there was a few different ways, uh, that we viewed it being as more than accurate. Um, if you looked at the Robertson South as a PUD separately from entirely from Phase Two North, uh, there's a, a big portion that is a steeper topography towards the back that is wooded. Uh, we under, we understood that as being considered green, open green space. Uh, there was some back and forth on if that was able to be accounted for. We, we said, look, we could take those trees down and then it would truly be open space or we could leave it as is and have a nice buffer towards the highway, uh, add that into the calculations. Secondary to that, there was the discussion of the detention versus the retention. If I'm remembering correctly, uh, detention, constantly wet, wet basin, could be considered as open area space. Uh, we had initially shown it as retention, so only after heavy rains or, or, you know, rain events that it would be filled with water, uh, that couldn't be considered open area space. So regardless, we, we took both of those. We actually pulled out just to be, you know, meet in the middle, the, uh, detention area and so that, okay, we won't consider that as open area space. We've still met that above 25% threshold for the PUDs as a individual PUD. But if you were to take it as a contiguous parcel towards the, uh, what we're calling MCC North, um, and you take those open area calculations and even if you remove some of the question marks of, of the southern parcel, we're like 35, uh, if not higher percent combined as a, as a PUD for open area space. So that was, hopefully that answers your question on it.
Okay.
Mrs. Hoover?
Um, another question, and I believe this is correct, but I didn't want to, I wanted to confirm this, the property, the Robertson South, you weren't able to sell, if you were, if I wanted to put a house there and sell it, that's not a possibility because of the land, is that correct?
That's correct. So we did a voluntary VAP agreement, um, for that land, uh, so we will have to go through a remediation process, uh, but it's not something, our agreement with the Ohio EPA is that we could never sell this to, to a different individual owner. It has to be a commercial space of some sort because that next owner will have to take on, uh, that yearly testing. There's, there's a whole other list of covenant not to sue once we sell that. So we are taking on that liability once we clean it up. It, it couldn't go to an individual homeowner down the line.
Thank you. That's my.
Further questions or discussion? Mr. Royce?
Would now be the appropriate time to ask Mr. Oaks if he is interested in an extension?
Um, I, I just have a question on, on that. So this is the zone change in the preliminary PD review. Um, if there was an issue, could that not, would that not be stipulated to be addressed for the final PD approval that we would have to come back for in a few weeks from now?
Mr. Moore?
Uh, no. It's got, council's got to act on this within a certain amount of time after they receive the notice from the planning commission?
Correct.
One way or the other.
For the preliminary and the zone change.
Correct, but we can't, it, none of the rest of it matters if we don't change the zoning. You can't have a PUD overlay. You can't have, um, uh, you can't expand the PUD and you can't approve a PUD plan over a parcel that's not a part of the PUD. So there's, at the very least, if we can't do the zone change, we can't do any of the rest of it.
Okay. What would that extension look like? Is this a two-week extension period? Is that?
As long as they need.
Mrs. Franzen?
Um, from my perspective, not to speak for anyone else, um, just so I can, I'm especially concerned about a lack of public notice because I want to make sure that we are following our codified ordinances. Um, it, it would be good for me to have that time so we can check and make sure that the things that we are agreeing or denying have all of the legal requirements met. Um, I don't think I'd need more than two weeks. That's just me. So it would be next meeting would be something that I would be happy to have. Um, but I will, of course, I'd be interested to see what everyone else says.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes. So just for the benefit of, um, students in the audience especially, and Mrs. Boyle who asked about this earlier, um, through the president, I'd just like to clarify what the process typically looks like for this is that we have three separate council meetings. At each council meeting, we receive one reading of an ordinance or a resolution. It gives us the opportunity to speak as a group. There are laws that control what we can talk about collectively. Um, and so this is the one place that we can discuss active city issues. Uh, so typically what this process would look like is we would have one meeting where we would have a first reading. Two weeks later, we'd have a second meeting with a second reading. Two weeks after that, we'd have a third reading and then we would finally vote on that issue. Um, this does not follow that typical process because of the time constraints. Um, I would not feel comfortable making a vote on this, this evening. I would love at least a two-week extension, um, especially if there were not proper, uh, postcards mailed out to residents. I want them to all have the ability to come and be heard as well. Um, so if this can serve as ample notice for that, that would be great as well. Those are my thoughts. I would love at least two weeks.
Mrs. Franzen?
So I guess how we could do this potentially is we could, I believe, ask you for an extension. We could do two readings tonight and then have the third and final reading two weeks from now and then make a decision to approve or deny at that point. Um, that way, um, because it requires a six out of seven vote, if someone happens to be sick, um, you know, or two people having to be sick, we could still do that third and final reading, um, two weeks from now. But since we have a full council here, sometimes it makes more sense to do two readings while we have the full council so that, you know, we're not stuck.
Yeah. For that third reading, we would only need a majority.
Correct. But if we did not have, if we had to do the second and third reading?
Correct.
That would not be the case.
The multiple.
Yeah. That's my, uh, proposal to you all. I don't know if that sounds reasonable.
Mr. Gardner?
I'm very much interested in three readings. I don't know that I want to push this through in any way, shape or form. I thought three readings were on the agenda for, you know, not, not literally on the agenda, but I thought three readings were on our docket. Uh, we haven't even discussed if this is good for the city or not. Um, and so I, I'm not exactly for sure what we're discussing here, if we're discussing logistics of how to, how to vote or not, but we, we still haven't decided, uh, we haven't discussed anything about what the feedback was from tonight's hearing. So I'm, I'm concerned where, where we, I'm not concerned, I'm confused where we are in the process.
Mrs. Franzen?
I think for me, I just wanted to try to figure out logistics before we got into the nitty-gritty of what we actually think about this because I feel like that's going to take more time. Um, so I just wanted to think about like, if, if as Mr. Moore says, this is something that we have to either vote up or down tonight unless we get an extension. I agree. I thought we had more time as well, so I'm trying to kind of balance what I'm hearing now with what I thought.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. And I think just one other piece, and I'll speak for myself on this. I know at least one of these references, uh, subject to recommendations and caveats as approved by the planning commission on June 19th, um, and, and modified, like, I'm not, I don't attach to this council packet. There was not a detailed map. There was not a before and after. I saw it on the TV two weeks ago. Uh, in going back through all historical council packets, I, I am unaware of a fine-toothed, detailed flip through. I mean, for Montgomery Road, we had, I want to say 75-plus pages of detailed engineering drawings to review before we approved that plan. I've seen this one on the TV, um, and otherwise, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for anyone else. That's my experience. I just look back through all my packets, um, and I have a general, but the very specific nitty-gritty of this has not been outlined to me in any materials provided, which is, I think, pretty concerning.
Mr. Braden?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So yeah, I, I, you know, there was a good points. So is it a simple majority for second, for the second reading?
Or to suspend, to suspend the rules and have the first and second readings, we would have, we would need six of the seven voting in favor.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the, having two readings. I think that's a good plan to have two readings and then you can always vote it down. If you don't like it, you can just vote no. I mean, I don't, I don't see any issues with the first and second reading tonight. We have plenty of time to go over it and vote no. So I mean, that's, that's my take on it. So, um, I'm okay with first and second reading. I have no problem voting for that, um, but I don't, I definitely, um, am listening to our residents. So I'm not saying I'm a yes or no. I'm saying I want, I want the time, uh, just as long as you guys do to, uh, bowl it over. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling?
Mr. Moore, I apologize for making you work this hard this evening. Um, would that process need to be that we vote to have first and second readings and then request an extension in order to make both of those things happen this evening?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think if Mr. Oaks says so and it ends up in the minutes at any point in this, I think we're good. So if Mr. Oaks will concede to a, an extension to the, whenever the next council meeting is at the ninth, maybe September 9th, then I think we're good.
Yeah. Um, yeah, that seems like the general consensus of, uh, having the first two readings this evening and then a two-week at the, uh, September 9th, um, having the third reading. Hopefully that's enough.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen?
For me, I'm eager to discuss the actual meat of the issue. Um, but I also, I feel like I also need time to process it. So even though I want to discuss it tonight, and I think we should, I think I'll have more thoughts two weeks from now. But, so I, for me, I think, uh, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to have the first and second readings of this ordinance.
Suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules and have the first and second readings.
First and second readings of the ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen?
I say let's talk about the actual ordinance as opposed to logistics, which is fascinating. I love logistics. Um, so we've got here, basically, this is the ordinance that allows the other two to even be possible. We have a PUD on this property that is about 2.5 acres and neighbors that are pretty concerned about a lot of stuff. Um, for me, I would like to learn more. I would also, like Mr. Moore said, like to see the actual current drawings. I've seen like sketch-ups and I've seen some of the stuff, but it'd be great to do that. That would give me more information. I just, for me, I feel like I just need more information in general. Um, and I want to also respect the people that have come here and have their concerns while also realizing that no matter what we do, someone's going to be unhappy with
Mrs. Bowling?
Yeah, I feel similarly. I think, um, when I think back to the community discussions that we had regarding Phase Two, um, a concern that for some reason has really stuck out in my mind was about headlights exiting Phase Two, coming into windows. Um, and the feedback that we were given from the developer was that there was about a 15-foot downgrade, so they would not be pointed directly at houses. Um, I could totally be incorrect on that, but as I think construction looks currently, there is no longer a downgrade. It looks like the paved road is coming flat out of, um, facing houses directly. I could be incorrect. That could be an entrance only. I'm not 100% sure. Um, but that's just something that I've noticed lately. And so there, you know, I have to think if I were living in one of those houses and I needed to now put blackout curtains on all my front windows because there were headlights coming in and out of my windows, that would be concerning. Um, I live in a 115-year-old house. We take great care of it. People who owned it before us took great care of it. It's still 115 years old. If there were suddenly very large vibrating machines happening next to it, I can imagine I may have some concerns about, uh, the stability of my foundation, which is 115 years old. Um, and so I think that's, that's important to consider. Um, I also would encourage renters to come speak at our next meeting. I think that there are a lot of renters in Norwood who are incredibly civically engaged. There are a lot of renters in that area who will also be impacted by this. Um, and I don't want anyone who rents and doesn't own their home, um, to feel like they don't get a say or their, their word is not as, as valuable. Um, we have renters running for council. We have renters sitting on council. I think there are tons of renters who are incredibly impactful to the city. Um, and, you know, their opinion means just as much as, as any homeowner, um, in my opinion. So I would, I would love to, to get more feedback from folks who live nearby. And again, I would love to see a detailed plan. Um, I think that will end up answering a lot of my questions, especially regarding things like setbacks, um, for what would then become corner lots. That does feel important. I will say there are a lot of things that as legislators, um, we are not experts on. There are entire departments within the city whose job it is to be aware of those sorts of technicalities. And so we do run into areas where, um, how much of, of that nitty-gritty detail of how many feet back is a house going to be set, um, is, is really under our purview because is, is really under our purview because we are here to legislate. But when there are that many folks being concerned about those things, it does seem like we should circle back and ask those questions, just to ensure that they've been looked at. Never hurts to have more, more eyes on an issue.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gerton.
I'm very concerned about the, the development. I don't think this neighborhood is built for that. Not, it's not built for this sudden influx, influx of density. Beach Street is going to be forever changed in terms of its usage, but we have no plan to improve Beach Street or even get it up to par. And so I think with construction traffic, with the added traffic, we're not looking in any kind of functional way about the infrastructure of what's going to happen with this property. Yes, I think it's, it's very disappointing what it's gonna hap, what's gonna happen to individual homes. But if you look at the whole neighborhood, it's gonna do much worse in terms of that whole section. Mr. Kaufman came a couple of months ago and talked about the density change, and how we would have to add 20 new front doors to every, like, block of Norwood to get that kind of density. I, I don't think we're ready for that. I, I don't think that the, the plans that I've seen are consistent. I mean, there was one meeting where they came in and they said, "Oh, we have 31 parking spaces, but you could count less than 17." And, and I, I don't trust this retention-detention pond is gonna be anything more than a mess. If, if we have a wet summer like we did earlier this year, that's gonna be flooded over for, you know, a month at a time. And it's just gonna become a mosquito cesspool. And it, it feels like there's a technicality on getting that counted as green space or not. And I, I don't know that I want to see our, our green space used as a detention pond. Our green space requirement is a detention pond. There's, there's other thoughts on it, but I don't see arguments coming to us that are pro, other than we're gonna take 2.8 acres and we're gonna add 45 new homes to this, this small piece of, piece of land that's not built to have 45 new homes on it. I would be supportive of this if it was a smaller project, but it, it seems like it's way too dense to be put into this small neighborhood. And I don't think any of us would want to see the density of our block increase proportionally to match what they do. So it, it's tough for me to think that we're sitting here voting on the future of these other people's lives when I think there's so much at stake.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. Those are some great, well-thought-out comments, and I agree with a whole lot of them. And I'm too concerned with the residents who have showed up here tonight and, and addressed their grievances towards this. The only thing that I'd like to point out, that, that I thought of when you were making those comments, and this is just merely semantics, I want to just say this. When I was born, we had 36,000 residents here in Norwood. So, so as far as we're not ready for it, you know, I think right now we're at, like, somewhere around 20,000. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. So right now, we're at 20,000. When I was born, we had 36,000 residents here in Norwood. So I just want to make, make sure that we're, we're aware that at one time, we had a whole lot of residents. So, and I'm total, I, I, I agree with your comments, and I, and I want to stand with you with the residents that are concerned about that. But as far as if we're ready for it, we've had, we were at one time at 36,000 residents. So, you know, whatever this was, you know, this, this may or may not affect negatively, but I just, I wanted to, I, I thought about that. When you said that, I wanted to voice it. So, there you go.
Further discussion? Ms. Royce.
Uh, I'm the renter on council. Scary, I know. Um, I'm just kidding. Um, I do just want to point out, again, I, I heard all the other concerns, but I cannot let it go. Renters do engage. I am here. I've been on council. This is my fourth year. In fact, I'm gonna guess most of Xavier students who are here engaging tonight are renters. I'm gonna guess they don't own property in Norwood. But if you do, congratulations. That'd be amazing. We had previous Xavier students who were liaisons between us and their government body as well. And I mean, even our landlords encourage renters to get involved. I have been at the Board of Elections when Ms. Bull comes in to get her tenants' voter registration papers. So, I mean, I just, I did want to point that out, and we pay income tax, as I'm sure previous renters know. And we, we do have spending power, because again, we are more than half of the population. So I just, I always got to say that. And of course, I, I agree with Mr. Moore. We did not get the detailed plans tonight. And I, I would really like to see those. I don't know if Planning Commission didn't send them over, or if it was just a mistake and not included in our packet, but I did, I clicked through all of our emails to try to find those. So definitely want those before we vote yes or no on this, so.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yeah, and like, I, it's a struggle because, like you said, Mr. Braden, Norwood had a lot more people. There was a lot more density overall, over the entire city, because you have to fit the people somewhere. It's always hard when you have a lot that has not been housing before suddenly becomes housing. I can see the issue. It's in, right behind their backyards, and it has some trees that are pretty large. So for me, as council, I have to struggle with being aware of the individuals involved, but also trying to figure out a way to make the City of Norwood as a whole the best place it can be, which does include being friendly to developers. The question is how friendly? The question is what do we allow? So I just want to say, like, I, even though there's increase, there is an increase in density, that doesn't bother me so much as just not having the plans and just not, I need, I just need more time to digest the comments I've gotten tonight, you know? I, I'm a, I'm a simple human woman. I need some time, and I need to go to sleep and kind of mull over what we've heard.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I think with regard to this, like, my, my personal feeling is that, like, something could happen on, on that land back there. And I, and I, like, I don't want to, you know, speak for the, the folks that, that spoke tonight, but I, I don't think I heard anyone say, like, absolutely nothing in the world should go back there. It should remain a parking lot in a grassy area forever. You know, and, and so I, like, I, I think that kind of, at, at this inflection point, like, I, I just want to say that in the sense that I, I think it's like, not this plan or this concept of a plan as we saw, you know, two weeks ago. But, but I think that, you know, absent, I, I think my real, my real point is that I think something could go there, but, but this specific, as we understand it, seems like it's problematic for a couple reasons, as well as the specific concerns of the residents called out.
Mrs. Bowlin.
Yeah, I don't think anyone loves the parking lot. I don't think the parking lot is green space. I don't think the parking lot helps with rainwater and runoff management. I don't think the parking lot brings a lot of value or asset to the community or the neighborhood. But I agree that I, I would love to see development in that area. And I'm not 100% sure that this, in its current iteration, is the best solution. You can look at my voting past. I am pro-development, generally speaking. I would like for us to be a developer-friendly city. I want us to get back to a more vast population size, and I think development is necessary for that. I just don't, I don't feel confident enough in this in its current iteration to be able to vote on it tonight. But I would love to see a vote on having the first two readings, so we can have this extension and discuss it again in two weeks.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yeah, that's my feeling too, is just this extension allows me more, us and me more time to think about and have better arguments for or against in two weeks, is my feeling. Yeah.
Mrs. Hoover.
Thank you. One of the things I wanted to just say to the residents that are being impacted, we all definitely hear you. We hear your concerns. I, I live in a, you know, residential area. I've got houses on all sides. Four-family, a three-family. I've got some student housing behind me. And I can share that, I think it was two years ago, the house behind me knocked down their garage to make a larger parking pad for maybe one of you. They didn't ask my permission. They didn't ask, they didn't need to ask my permission. But now, all of a sudden, instead of a part of a wall that was being used as a fence, frankly, we had lights coming into our backyard. I don't love it, but that's also part of living in, in a neighborhood, in a community. So that's not saying, oh, you live in a neighborhood, too bad, but that there are, progress does come with challenges and problems, and it's a matter of us balancing all of those together. The other piece is, that I keep going back to is that this is a neighborhood business district. And so that means, you know, in theory, this could have been something that we really didn't want, like a high-rise building, for example, or I heard one, one rumor of an FC practice field, which I think of that and my blood just runs cold, thinking about those bright lights and so that sounds awful. These are townhomes for rent, which is not a a housing form that we currently have here. So that's kind of interesting. It's a different, it's a different, what do you call that? Different stock, different form of housing stock. So, and then my final just sort of question is, in terms of our vote up or down, it's, they, they own the land, so it's not a matter of thumbs up or thumbs down with what they want, but rather with the PUD. I don't think I explained that well. But I, I just wanted to add that piece, that it's not like, here's our plan, we, we say yes, we like it, that we just have parameters that we need to make sure that it fits within. Does that make sense?
Mrs. Franzen.
So I think, I understand, so basically, they are already in Norwood Business District. So by right, according to our zoning code, they are allowed to build things on there. A PUD allows them some variance on what they're allowed to do. This, this is more for, sorry, but I'm talking to you like you don't know. Did you know that? So, um, this would be a great question for Mr. Moore, but he's not here, but I would be curious to know, let's say we decide we don't want this, this is not a plan that we like, do they come back to us with a different PUD, or do they just build what they want within the zoning code without any input from us? I do not know that. That's just kind of an open question for, I guess, yeah, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Powers.
Mr. Powers, is that something you can answer on behalf of, I guess, the, the role with, also with the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
I apologize. Would you repeat the question?
No, that's fine. I, I realize you were distracted. I was gonna ask you, and then Mr. Moore was not there. So let's say we vote this down. We say no, hate it, don't want it. Would PLK then be able to build basically whatever they wanted within our zoning code on that land?
No.
Without our input, or what would be the process there?
They would have to go back through the preliminary PUD process, starting with Planning Commission.
If, what if they did not want a PUD? Would they be able to withdraw from having a PUD, or is that something that is, they have to have?
The PUD was placed as a zoning overlay by ordinance, so it, it is there regardless of what is done here today, on, on the major portion. Now, there is also adding that, that PUD overlay to the 2739.
Yes.
Allen Robertson, 41. 41. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, uh, just wanted to make clear for everyone else what is, exactly is at stake here. So hypothetically, they can come back with a different plan and ask us to approve that plan and the PUD.
That's correct.
Mr. President. Mr. Bonzal.
Just, this is for Noah too, just a clarification. So PLK has made multiple times references to the fact that the PUD ordinance was approved without a corresponding plan with it. So right now, they literally can't do anything with their property, because when the PUD was approved, the city didn't approve a plan. Is there any merit to that argument? Because, I mean, I, I actually, I don't know myself, and I'm, just didn't know if, yeah.
So, so in, in order to have the, the PUD zoning overlay, you have to do a zoning map amendment. So that is, that is something that's totally separate from going through the PUD process, which is actually putting the preliminary plan and then the final plan. So there's kind of three pieces there. One is the, the amendment to the zoning map, that's placing the PUD overlay zone on the map, on the parcel. Then there's the preliminary PUD plan, and then the final PUD plan. So, no, there, there's no reason that you have to approve all three of those things at one time.
Just a follow-up. So what would happen if a council, like, so you all put the PUD overlay on a property, and the council just kept denying it, like, I'm not, that's not about this. I'm just saying in general, like, what, I mean, that means the property owner can't use their property? I guess I'm just really confused with that.
Yeah, it, it means that they, they can only use that as approved through a, a PUD.
And there's nothing, but there's nothing approved through the PUD right now. So there's, they can't.
Yeah, for the, for this, correct. There is nothing approved.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thanks.
Mrs. Bowlin.
This is gonna sound like a wild question to be asking at this point in the conversation, but I realize that maybe I missed this. Is 2741 currently occupied?
I do not know the answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Powers, the PUD is put in place so that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that put in place so that the city has more involvement in what it goes on there? Am I correct on saying that?
It, it sort of cuts both ways. So while, while the city can have more involvement in that, because the city does have to approve a plan, it allows a developer to come in and to have different aspects of a plan that would not meet the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I, I want to follow, just one thing I want to add. I'm, I'm self-employed. You know, nobody wants to hear from me. We all want to go home. But, you know, as a self-employed contractor for the last 25, 30 years here in Norwood. And then when I mentioned earlier, we had 36,000 residents, you know, and for the last 20, 25 years of my career, I've been a part of taking these multi, they, we had those residents because they would take these homes that we had, and they would cut them up, and they'd have one guy in this room, and one guy in this room, or, you know, a lady in this room, and, and they would all work for General Motors, Siemens, and Plan cards, and we had, we were booming. So as they generally left, over my career here, the past 25 years, I've been taking these multifamily homes, renovating them, turning them back into single-family owner-occupied homes, and, and a lot of them have been doing that. So that explains how we are down on residents. So there's just, just some background on our, on our, you know, population, and now that we're, we've lost that population, and, you know, we, some, some get excited when we get these big developments, you know, as, and, and, you know, they all, and understanding that some of the people around the developments get upset. So just a little background, my two cents. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gerton.
I assume we've all been, knowing this vote was coming up, I'm assuming we've all walked the property. And, and I think if you, if you haven't figured out how to imagine 45 homes into 2.8 acres, you're, you're not alone. I mean, it's, it's really hard to imagine how that, that space is going to be renovated, you know, completely dug out, and, and I'm, I'm sure they can do it. But they've had to jump through so many hoops to get, to get here, that it feels like we're, we're pushing this through when I, I don't think it's meant for what it's, that land is not meant. The plan is not meant for what that land is good for. And I, I mean, it is their prerogative. They bought that, that piece of property. And I, I don't think it's a bad idea to try to add more homes to that land. But that, that piece of property is not built so that we can just add 45 new homes to it. They, they have to manipulate it to make it work, and I feel like, I don't know. I, I just, I don't understand how we look at this on paper and think, I would like this in my neighborhood. And I don't understand how that's not the, the biggest priority when the seven of us vote.
Mrs. Bowlin.
One thing just to note on that point, especially because of the ground remediation that's required, anything that goes on that land will require a pretty significant amount of manipulation. As it currently stands, nothing is prepared to go on this land because of the remediation required for it to have occupants. I think that's just an important thing to factor in. It's not as simple as, like, taking a building and just slapping it on there and saying, that's great, that works. Regardless of whatever ends up here, if it is not the parking lot that is there right now, there is going to be a significant amount of, of site manipulation that's going to have to happen, just based on the quality of the dirt.
Further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to suspend the rules and have the first and second readings of the ordinance with the understanding that Mr. Oaks has agreed to that two-week extension. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Royce, I'll vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Gerton?
No.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
With a vote of five to two, that motion does not pass because we need it at least. because we needed at least six to suspend the rules. Mrs. Fransen?
I make a motion that we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Fransen to have the first reading of the ordinance. Mr. Braden?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Royce, I'll vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Gert?
No.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
A vote of five to two, that motion does carry. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance approving a zone change from Neighborhood Business District, NBT, to Neighborhood Business District Plan Unit Development, NBD slash, excuse me, hyphen PUD, over the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Parcel 651-0030-0194.
Thank you. Before the next, before the next ordinance is considered, we did have two requests to address council. I know you both spoke during the public hearings. Did you want to utilize time to speak prior to council considering this or are you, this was for Tony Boyle and Diane Farrell?
I'm still ordering.
All right.
I was just saying.
All right.
I would just like to point out that throughout the entire planning commission process and this process, notice was not given in time and we still don't have to approve things. This PUD does not meet the requirements of a PUD and there are multiple things on that that are not required. So I don't know how this vote is occurring. And again, phase two laws amended approval have not been met. So I don't know why we're voting on this if we, if the city and PLK have not held their end of the party of phase two.
Thank you. So now we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the ordinance approving the expansion of the planned unit development PUD plan area south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, Parcel 65-0030-206, referred to as Robertson South, to include the property known as 2471 Robertson Avenue, Parcel Mrs. Bowlin.
I move we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Bowlin to have the first reading of the ordinance. Mrs. Fransen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fransen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Royce, I will vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Gert?
No.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
With a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance approving the expansion of a planned unit development PUD plan area south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, Parcel 651-0030-0206, referred to as Robertson South, to include the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Parcel
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance approving the preliminary planned unit development PUD plan as modified for the property south of Robertson Avenue, Notice 4500 Beach, Parcel 651-0030-0206 and 651-0030-0194, referred to as Robertson South. Mrs. Hoover?
I move we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to have the first reading of the ordinance. Mrs. Bowlin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowlin. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. So am I understanding correctly, this is to approve the preliminary plan for the joint Robertson South and 2741 Robertson? Am I understanding that correctly? Yeah, I guess my comment would just be that, you know, there, there is no plan in this packet. There is no before, there is no as modified. Frankly, I don't know what we're talking about.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Bowlin, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Royce, I'll vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Gert?
No.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
Vote of five to two, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance approving the preliminary planned unit development PUD plan as modified for the property south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, Parcel 651-0030-0206 and 651-0030-0194, referred to as Robertson South.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Norwood Police Wage and Bargaining Committee, referred to by the FOP Ohio Labor Council, Inc., consistent with the terms of the attached Exhibit A for the period from January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Gert?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. Gert to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mr. Gert?
One of the reasons why I'm okay pushing this through on emergency declaration, this was brought to us last week in executive sessions. We had a chance to look over it and this wasn't the first time we, our eyes met on it.
Mrs. Fransen?
This is also retroactive to January 1, 2025, and it is now August. So it'd be good to get it done.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mr. Gert, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I'll vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gert?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Norwood Police Wage and Bargaining Committee, represented by the FOP Ohio Labor Council, Inc., consistent with the terms of the attached Exhibit A for the period from January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Norwood Police Wage and Bargaining Committee, represented by the FOP Ohio Labor Council, Inc., consistent with the terms of the attached Exhibit A for the period from January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Norwood Police Wage and Bargaining Committee, represented by the FOP Ohio Labor Council, Inc., consistent with the terms of the attached Exhibit A for the period from January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowlin.
I move that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Bowlin to pass the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I will vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gert?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. The next item is a resolution authorizing some support and commitment to the urban forestry grant program and declaring an emergency. Mr. Moore?
Motion that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. Moore to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Mr. Braden?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I think one of the reasons that this would go through in all three readings is that the deadline for applying to the grant is tomorrow.
Mrs. Hoover?
Also, we did see this last time, but there needed to be some changes to it. I want to thank a lot of hands who were, were part of getting it to us tonight. And I want to thank the law department and Noah Powers and the mayor and I think just about every department has been assisting me in this. So thank you very much for your support of this.
Further discussion? All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Braden, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I will vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gert?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution.
A resolution authorizing support and commitment to the urban forestry grant program and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing support and commitment to the urban forestry grant program and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing support and commitment to the urban forestry grant program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowlin?
I move we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowlin to pass the resolution. Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Ms. Royce?
Since green space has been a topic tonight and I don't know if everyone watched last week's meeting, because I don't know if everyone sits at home and watches council meetings. This is to get $100,000 to plant trees in Norwood, so, for free, after reimbursement. Is it more than that? I'm sorry. Okay.
Mrs. Hoover?
It's $100,000. A portion of it is to plant trees. A big portion is to do a tree survey to look at all of our public trees and find out what their status is, what needs attention, what doesn't. But then part of it is, we're hoping to plant about 100 trees.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowlin, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I will vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gert?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. The next item is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 to enable timely payment of Duke Energy for power for police functions and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Bowlin?
I meant that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Bowlin to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Years. Just as a procedural matter, I see that the amount here is $5,000 that is being moved. What is the, and is there a, like, threshold below which this sort of thing can just happen without council doing this? Or?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, you can't move money from one key to another without council approval.
Okay, no matter the dollar amount, okay, thank you.
Doesn't matter.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowlin, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I'll vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gert?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 to enable timely payment of Duke Energy for power for police functions and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 to enable timely payment of Duke Energy for power for police functions and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 to enable timely payment of Duke Energy for power for police functions and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowlin?
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Bowlin to pass the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I will vote yes. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gert?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We now move on to administration reports. Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. President.
First of all, if you look out at Montgomery Road, of course, it's a mess right now, but it is going to improve from here. But you might recall that this project, the project here in our main area is a pedestrian safety improvement project, brought on by O, or yes, ODOT, and looking at Montgomery Road, it's a big part of that, but we're utilizing stack financing, so there's all sorts of different financing that's going in to make the improvements that are here. Trying to utilize the money in the best way possible. And then on the north side is the water, major water main replacement going all the way up to Fenwick, that's been a mess with all the plates on it and all that. But there's light at the end of the tunnel. I mean, if you look at how bad Montgomery Road is right now, it will be, when we finalize this out, it'll all be paved from curb, from corp to corp line. So that'll be a huge improvement. Talking about pedestrian safety, I think some people might have forgotten that school is back in, and we should be slowing down, and we shouldn't be driving that fast in our city anyways, but pedestrian safety is a big part of it. No turn on red is enforced now during school days, and if you are turning on red because you got used to just taking your quick right turn, you're going to get caught and you're going to get a ticket. At least I'm going to try to push to make sure you get a ticket, because you shouldn't be turning on red at those designated areas. So slow down there. There are children, there are adults, there's just a lot of activity in the city right now. Even the construction workers really would appreciate it if you'd slow down, so everybody needs to keep that in mind. Talking about, talking about projects also, the Elm Avenue Storm Sewer Improvement Project is going on right now. I don't know if any of you've had a chance to sort it over and look in that area, but they've started doing the clearing of that whole valley back in there behind those homes. And it's pretty impressive, the equipment that they've been using, and they're recycling a lot of the wood that's being taken out of there to get that, that all set up, to have that detention basin put in place, which it'll be a dry detention basin. Normally, it'll be dry unless it's storm, and normally detention basins are empty, totally emptied, within hours after a storm typically. It's not water just sitting there, but that project is going along. And then another one that Mike Skelly, our development director, our community development director, has launched the Second Norwood Street Survey. So he has an engineering firm that he's working with, and I'm sure he'll be providing some waypoints as they go through to the Infrastructure Committee and to council to look at that. And you recall that, you know, we did a survey a few years ago. It was really an Excel spreadsheet. It was a visual survey. They went through and told us what street, they raided our streets, and the administration has worked hard to try to stay on track with what streets really needed to be repaired or paved or taken care of, and we've been working on that pretty diligently, staying on that with, with some improvements in each of the four wards. But this new one will be a little bit more in depth. It'll give us some more information on some costs, some funding costs, and should be really extremely helpful as we make decisions, not just for the next year, but for the next five years. And that's, that's an important, when he, when he put together a request for proposals and they, they vetted the different engineering firms, I think we've got the best one possible for what we're trying to get out of it. So that's, that's a big part of the progress that's being made. So then I'll circle right back to, you know, slowing down pedestrian safety, car safety. I know there were, there were comments also made on Robertson and looking at the speed and trying to put some speed equipment there, which we can, I'll talk to the chief about that stuff, and we'll try to get something implemented there. The nice part about some of that is they have data collection that can tell, tell us, you know, what is the speed? What's the average speed through there? And, you know, typically what we've seen is, when we put that up, the average speed goes down quickly. It's, it's a great tool, or they are great tools, so that's about it. That's all I have, really, Mr. President.
Any questions for Mayor Snyder? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Just with regard to Montgomery Road, I think all of us have probably gotten questions from, from different folks at different times. One of them is usually like, well, what all is going on over there? You know, and then, and then the other one is, well, how long is it going to be like that? And so I was just wondering if you could comment on that.
Pedestrian safety, it's road thinning. So instead of our, instead of Montgomery Road being, you know, seven to nine lanes wide, where pedestrians have to go across, they're bumping out the curbs and, and in the corners, you can absolutely see where they're, they're bumping them out pretty far, which decreases the amount of time where a child is exposed to, you know, a vehicular traffic. So that's a big part of it. They're also bumping it out to give a little bit more room on the sidewalks. We'll still have the same travel lanes, we'll still have two lanes going both ways down these ends, so you'll still have the same travel lanes, you'll still have the same turn lanes, but it will be thinned down. And, you know, so some people, and I think I've said it before on councils, some people would say like, well, that's going to slow down traffic, it's going to be more congested. Well, you can only get through this part of Norwood so fast anyways, you're hitting the lights, so it is going to slow things down, but that's part of the, part of the safety plan, actually. And we hope to work on the lighting systems and make it so that there is, you know, free flow through there and actually do some, some light improvements, traffic light improvements to, to make some improvements there. There's nothing worse than coming to a stoplight at 10:30 at night here in front of City Hall, and there's nobody moving anywhere, and you have to stop. So we're, we're going to look at some new tech in the next few years to try to improve our, our traffic flows in, in those ways also. But it's going to be that way for a while, you know. They're, they're making quick progress, but the final coat of this is probably, it won't go on until the end, the end of '26, is when we'll probably see all of the final paving completed. So '27 will be a beautiful year, but there's a lot of work getting done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mayor Snyder? All right, Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you very much. So I, a couple of things, just kind of looking at like the, the ordinances that you all were just kind of considering. It's not, you all not getting documentation, there's a disconnect somewhere going on, but it's not the, it's not the applicant, because the applicant has to submit so many copies of it, and the building department would not take the application without it. So like, that's a city function somewhere, whether it's the building department, if like a council, the, somebody that, there's, there, the communication's not happening. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that. I'm going to send an email in just a moment about it, so that, you know, Julie's to put my voice on it, because it's, we used to get, actually, we used to get really nice, when we had some of the buildings that were approved, like the Hells United Building, we would get like the renderings, we'd get like a little booklet that was kind of glossy and everything, it was very, it was very nice. It wouldn't be for this, this is a preliminary PUD, but still, I would expect, I think you all were right to demand and try to work on trying to get those, but it's not the applicant's fault that you don't have them, because the building department would have taken the application if, if not for that. Other thing I just want to kind of note is that the run, like, right now, we, we have a property there that has chemicals in the soil, and so even though it has, it's had those chemicals in soil for 20, 30, 40 years, there's a lot of stuff that's hap, that's going to have to happen. I mean, those trees are going to likely get cut down no matter what, so, just so that they can do the remediation of the soil. So, I mean, no matter what happens on that property, there's a ton of dirt that's going to get taken out, there's a ton of stuff that's going to have to happen, it's going to be very expensive, so. But yeah, so I just want to let you all know that. The other thing is, it's amazing, go back to Montgomery Road, it's amazing how many people are working there, and I still, like, even at night, in the middle of the night sometimes, I drive down the road, and there's like 20 people out working on Montgomery Road, so, I mean, it's, loving all the progress, you can hear that, hear it right now. As far as our office, I'll get back to that, you all didn't give me anything I could talk about, so I'll talk about whatever. But as far as our office, the tax office, so last week I gave you all kind of a update on the taxes, on like where we were, so we're like looking pretty good year over year. We are going to be providing revenue estimates for earnings taxes in about a month, whenever the due date is, and we'll make sure that those get to council when we provide those. Other than that, I have no other. See, doing out in the middle of the night? Like, what are they doing out in the middle of the night here? Just driving home?
Little twelve hour curls?
Yeah.
Can't hear home, it's happening outside right now.
Yeah, there's a lot of activity outside right now.
Any questions for Mr. Bonzal? All right, Mr. Miracle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening in our Finance Committee meeting, we discussed our end of month reports. We reviewed those each month with the Finance Committee. Also, we are working with Monday.com. Currently, we have a contract, I've asked our law department to review that contract, and, and once they've approved that and given that back to me, we're going to move forward with that. Also, update on VIPSSI, we have a system upgrade, working with NORCOM, we hope to have that completed here soon, and once we do that, then we can move forward with, with the username and password for, for council. So that should be happening hopefully in the next week or so. This evening we also had a good discussion, Mr. Gerton and Mr. Moore, and with Mrs. Fransen, with the Pace Communication Team, they were here, so we will have more to follow with that as well, so that was a good meeting, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Miracle? All right, Mr. Moore? Any questions for Mr. Moore? All right, then we will move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? All right. How about, I'm sorry? That part of the meeting has already completed. It is, but the public hearing portion of it is complete, and the request to address council has also already been concluded. Any new business? Mr. Moore?
Ms. Fransen, may I suggest getting a parks meeting on the calendar?
I was literally going to ask that, so we're on the same wavelength. I'm trying to coordinate right now with someone who wants to come to the Infrastructure Committee meeting, but I wanted to see, I know Mondays tend to work best for, for some people, so let's see, next week, let's say, next week. Second, we have the committee at the hall, we could do Parks Meeting before that.
With a law and ordinance?
Oh, shoot. I, thank you, thank you for that. Let's look at the week of September 8th, Monday.
Is the third an option or no?
Oh, the third could be an option, yeah.
I am unavailable.
Yeah, I know with, with Ms. Bowling, that Mondays tend to be easiest, so I was trying to look at those. If there's a Monday, the 8th?
I'm also available during the day, during the week, if that makes sense, like it's here. I am free the 8th, I can do.
Anyone else? 8th?
I can do.
8th?
Yeah, what time are you thinking?
5:30? 5:30? Is 5:00 okay?